Our is in hand, I'm putting this great man up here. Because he deserves, oh no, he deserves. I've been looking forward to this, I've been looking forward to it. Uh for a while now, the minute he said yes. And uh I'm so glad that he's on, uh he is running for city council. In the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. And I'm saying this, the United States, because we are all over the world and we're on both social media. Yes, yes, you but you look great, look great. How are you, sir?
Miss Williams, I'm doing excellent. What a beautiful day today. Uh my, you're talking about football, my Packers took it in the, in the shorts. Tough day for me, sir, so I did a lot of praying in church today, a lot of praying.
Okay, okay, uh I'm a Packer fan as well, uh I'm a Packer fan, I'm a Raider fan, so. You know, uh well, but the Raiders in the lead right now, so.
Well, Packers, not only am I a fan, I own one share.
Do you?
I'm part of management, big guy, part of management.
Oh my, huh? Really? You're a family.
One share, one. That's all you need, that's all.
I mean, you've got, no, you've got Packer in your blood.
Yes, sir.
Oh my god, I've never been this close.
We got love in the air with Jordan Love, love in the air.
You, you should have started with.
If that does it, we're done.
I'm telling you, oh my goodness. I love it, anyway. So, uh tell us about Bruce Lalande. Who is?
And I appreciate that opportunity, uh uh you, you tell me when you want me to cut it off, alright? But uh again, I'm running for council, uh I need people's support and I appreciate the opportunity like this, be able to talk to people. Hope we're reaching a lot of people in Portsmouth. Uh I'm uh uh with early voting starting on the twentieth of September, this was, this was a good time for you to get me on TV, so. People can see me and challenge me with those questions. I'm a local boy, uh my mother and father, I'm the oldest of eight, I grew up in Hodges Manor. Uh went to Hodges Manor, Harry Hunt, graduated Wilson, the old Wilson in seventy-one. Uh played uh played minor sports, I was uh went to the States in track, went to the States in tennis, so I was pretty competitive. Uh had somewhat a bit of smart, so I went to undergraduate to the University of Tennessee in Knoxville, Tennessee. Uh as far as education goes, I have a undergraduate degree in accounting. Uh I have a masters in computers from George Washington University. I have a masters in marketing, a MBA from the Ohio State University. And I have a masters in strategic planning for the National Defense University. After I graduated from uh uh hi- uh college, I immediately joined the Navy. Uh I wanted, I tried to get to Vietnam, I couldn't get there quick enough. I was in twenty-six years, followed in my father's footsteps, I lost my father very early. Followed my father's footsteps, I did twenty-six years in the Navy, Ken, I retired as a Navy captain. I kept, kept very close tabs to Portsmouth, uh still came home to Portsmouth, took care of my mother. After my career was over, uh well, I did the uh Middle East thing, I did the uh Haiti thing. I was very well decorated, obviously you don't make captain unless you do something good. So I came home uh to take care of my mother. Uh I moved to uh Churchland first, and then I wanted to get closer to her, so I moved to Green Lakes. Uh I did a lot of forensic accounting, I'm a CPA. All I know is government accounting, I'm a boring guy, Ken, I know.
That's not boring.
All, all I know is money and how to take care of money, so I worked for companies. That uh needed help looking at their finances and what problems they were having with their finances. Uh I did that for about ten years and I decided life has been very good to me, very good. Uh so I decided it's time to take a step back and just do volunteer work. So first was with, first was with my church, I'm, I'm very Catholic. Uh I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus, in fact, I was Knight of the Year last year. Uh I was a member of a men's Catholic group in Norfolk where I was president for three years, parish council. Uh uh and head of Catholic charities for the state of Virginia, so I was with all the Ca- Catholics, I did that. Did the USO, so I did the veteran thing, uh working with active duty veterans. And I'm still presently the uh president of the Military Officers Association that meets in, at Roger Brown's, we meet uh. Third Thursday of the month at Roger Brown's. So that's the military, so I've got the church, my God, which is first, my country, which is next. And then uh what am I doing in the city of Portsmouth? Uh I was just recently the uh chairman of the board of Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, I was chairman for three years. I'm head of Safety Town, Ken, which is located uh right near you on uh Deep Creek Boulevard. Uh so I'm head of Safety Town. Uh I'm, as I said, president of the Military Officers Association. Uh I do a lot of mentoring of young boys, uh uh I've taken them. Uh the last three, they're, I had them when they're eight, they're twenty-seven years old now. Uh they were from very, very broken homes, single parents here in the city of Portsmouth. Uh one of them, he was two grades behind, uh bullied a lot. Uh he graduated with honors, he ended up graduating with honors from Booker T and went to Virginia State on a full ride. So the three boys, uh one of them lived with me for a while, he's working at Amazon now. And the other boy who's twenty-seven, they're all twenty-seven now, he's a caregiver for a young lady and uh in Cavalier manner, matter of fact, in Cavalier manner. So the boys have done well. Uh I've been uh awarded uh uh the Virginia Mentoring Partnership, named the Mentor of the Year for the state of Virginia a couple of years ago. Uh Wavy TV ten has honored me for my mentoring work, uh Military Newspapers has honored me for my mentoring work. I read to the kids, uh I'm Bruce the Moose. Uh I read to the kids at Olive Branch uh kindergarten. I'm on the board, I'm on the board of Portsmouth Catholics, I read to the kids at Portsmouth Catholic. Uh Poki Smokey, Ken, if you know Poki Smokey. Uh if you remember, it wasn't there for a long time, I helped raise all that money to bring Poki Smokey back.
Really, okay.
So uh Ken, uh uh God was first, my country was right there. And now it was to volunteer, because life has been good, Ken, I'm not, I'm not uh designed, life has been good to me. Uh uh my mother and father are both buried at uh Olive Branch, so I'm home. I'm very active in the community, I'm a member of about eight or nine civic leagues. Uh my last paying job was with Page Cherry as the city deputy city treasurer. But my focus right now, Ken, is still to give back to the city and then also to uh uh run for city council. Question always asked, why am I running for city council? I'm, I'm very upset about how the money's being handled, okay? Crime needs to be worked on, no doubt, economic development needs to be worked on, no doubt. Schools need to be worked on, no doubt, but it's gonna take money to do it. And I'm very concerned about particularly real estate taxes, utility bills, casino money. Worse than that for us citizens, I, I, I'm a resident of Portsmouth, this is our money. And I want to be, I want to be able to help as much as I can advise the city manager, advise the council. And do what we could do to put the money back in our pockets.
So are you saying that transparency, is there great transparency right now?
There is no transparency right now.
No transparency, okay.
Uh you know, you, you look at it, Ken, when was, when was the last time you heard any type of money report? From the city about what we're doing with our money, when was the last time, you haven't heard one? And uh you're, you're part of a group that uh does meetings and you have the minutes and. You say a prayer and you do the pledge allegiance, and the third thing you do is you do a treasury report. When was the last time you heard a treasury report from the city of Portsmouth about your money? There's no transparency, Ken, I mean, flat out, let's just, let's just be honest, there's no transparency.
Okay, day one, what would you do?
I'm gonna ask for the city auditor to be hired, alright, uh that's one of the five positions. That the city council can hire is a city auditor, we're the only city that I know of in the region that doesn't have a city auditor, so. That way, there's a separate voice talking to council about the money. Secondly, I'd like to create a board of smart people in Portsmouth who know things about money, create a board. We have a board for parks and rec, we got a port, board for the cemeteries, we got a board for planning. We have a board for parking, we have a board for, we don't have a board for money in the city of Portsmouth, Ken. How is that, we're a billion dollar company, this is a billion dollar company. We have no people on the, on the city council know anything about money, and we don't have anybody who's looking out for us.
So um about this forty-five million dollar. Uh what is this, the, the forty-five million dollar deal to purchase and improve the former Hampton Roads Regional Jail? You for that or?
I, I don't, I don't know, it's a matter of being for or against it, it's, it's, it's a double edged sword, it's already happened, alright? It's already happened, so whether we wanted it to happen or not, it's gonna happen. We need, on one hand, we need the waterfront cleared for development. You know, and to do that, the jail had to move. Isn't it awful coincidental, isn't it awful coincidental, Ken, we had a fire at the jail? Isn't it awful coincidental?
Yeah, yeah, well.
Awful coincidental, okay? And you know, so does it have to move all the prisoners over there to the Hampton Roads jail? And I've never seen a deal made so quickly in my entire life, okay? Forty-five million deer, dollar deal, seems like it was made behind closed doors without our, without, you know. I would think at least talk to us a lot about it, okay? But it's already a done deal, alright, so whether I like it or not, it's gonna happen. Now let's see if we can get smart on the waterfront, Ken, can we be smart about what we're doing on the waterfront?
Uh what about crime?
It's uh, you know, everybody's admiring the problem. Everybody's singing songs about the problem, everybody's doing walks about the problem. When I was at Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, this was five years ago. When the crime rate was start, right, COVID, the crime rate was starting to hit. I went to the, I went to the mayor at the time, and I went to the city manager at the time, I went to the police chief at the time and said. Twenty-three percent of the homicides are happening in public housing. I mean, you, you, it has a bad image, public housing has a bad image, okay? And I said, I need some help, I'm not in the, I'm not in the police business, I'm in the housing business, can you help me? And the answer was no, alright, we don't have enough people, we don't have enough money, you're just gonna have to wait in line. Well, about that time, there was a seventeen year old boy, got about twelve bullets put into him at Swanson. Okay, and I said, here I am, chairman of the board, I have fourteen thousand people that I'm responsible for, and you're telling me to be patient, right? Wh- wh- what do you do when somebody's got, what do you tell a parent that's living in our housing, right? So I said, so I went to the police chief and I said, well, tell me what you can do and you can't do. He said, well, I just don't have the officers, and they're still saying the same thing, we don't have the officers, okay? So the first thing I did, Ken, was I had cameras put on, in all our housing areas, this is before Portsmouth even thought about cameras. I got cameras put into all the houses, right? The second thing was, the, the, I hired five people to work from twelve o'clock at night until six in the morning, because that was the problem time. Twelve o'clock at night until six in the morning, and all they did was police, all they did was just make rounds around that seven second. The third thing was, is uh I, I, the board of directors that I was in charge of. I said, we can't just meet at our headquarters and have people come to us and tell us what their problems are. We need to go to the housing areas, Thebus, Hamilton, Seaboard, Dale Homes, Lexington Place. I want us out of the, out of the headquarters, and we go to them every month, okay? Sounds like a simple thing to do, right? And the residents beat us up, you need to do this, 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 and that's what, that's what we needed, right? That is exactly what we needed, we needed to hear from the residents, hey, what is it that you want to do for us, okay? And we did, so we did the meetings, we did the police, you know, the off duty, not off duty, but the, uh the. Conservatives of the Peace that I hired, the cameras that we had. And then the next thing I did with Ken, was I put Bruce Lalande in a car, alright? And about two, three days a week, about two in the morning, I would ride around housing, okay? I would have ridden around, and I'd look at who was hanging out, because that's what it is, that's, it's, it's, it wasn't the residents. It was people coming in from outside. I'm not saying they're all bad people, but all it takes is a couple. And I told the residents, I love you very, very much, I need to protect you. But you gotta stop the bad people from coming in. And I know they're your uncles, and I know they're your nephews, and I know you're their grandkids, but they're bringing bad things in. And if you don't help me, then I've gotta take some action to evict you from housing. We went from twenty-three percent violent crime to less than three percent violent crime. The only way you're gonna do it, being a military guy, the only way you're gonna do it is you gotta be proactive. You gotta do it before things happen, after somebody gets shot, having a reset walk, they're already dead, Ken. It doesn't do any good, so it's an every, it's an everyday thing, so how would I help with the police chief? Move around, you know, you know, the bike rides that they're doing ahead of time, I love that. Bruce Lalande, the council people, the police chief, going to city council meetings, you need to do that. All of us, I know it sounds kind of ridiculous, we need to get in the car and just drive around.
Right, that's how you see what's going on.
You gotta see what's going on, and also you gotta show people, you gotta show people who, you know, kind of wanna do bad things. I can see you. Yes, sir, I'm not gonna let you do it in my city. You, you, you can't, right now, you can't admire the problem, alright? Been at Safety Town, I'm at Safety Town, and I'm trying to work with kids, kindergartners, first graders and third graders, and tell them. Hey, if you see a gun, you need to tell your mom and dad to lock it up. I mean, as simple as it, I'm not, I'm not here to defend Second Amendment, you know, people are by law. All I'm asking is, if you have a child, lock the gun up, please lock the gun up, okay? So I talked a lot about crime, crime is an issue. It's, it's, I don't know what happened, Ken, it's been a slow summer, and I, you know, blessed as it has been. But I think the police chief, with these cameras he's got, with the ri- bike rides that they're doing. And a lot of these uh, you know, just stop, you know, block the block, the seven five seven, all these organizations. We, we all gotta take our city back, okay? And that's what we need to do, we just can't say, hey, you know, it, it's somebody else's problem, it is our problem as citizens, okay?
So are you gonna, are you gonna make the city, try to make the city council more accessible? To its.
That's all I can, that's all I can ask, I'm just gonna be one of seven, but I know one thing, Ken, Bruce is gonna be accessible.
But all it takes is one to start it, you know?
Yes, sir, that, you hit it right on the head, it's just like Cinderella, she just had a pair of shoes, and look what she did with those pair of shoes, you know? You know, you know just as well as I do, one person can make a difference, right? And, and I, if, if all, all I could do is plant the seed, but I want, as I said with the, with the PRHA, when I had the board. You know, I have a lot of people skeptical about, hey, why do we want to meet in the, where the housing areas are, well, that's where the people live. You know, I love, I love, you know, I love all seven people on council, they're all great people, but they're all at the city hall. Get out, okay? Ninety-six thousand people voted for you, alright? They deserve to talk to you about what their issues are, you may not like what they're saying, and that's okay, you may not have an answer. That's okay too, but these are grown adults, and they need to be heard, okay?
They, I, I drive around and um. I see homeless people more now. Um the shelter. Uh situation here. Um how do you see it, and how would it be improved?
Uh about six or seven years ago, I was in charge of Oasis Social Ministry Opportunity Center. My job was to help find homeless felons jobs, okay? These are, these are people that didn't have homes and they had felony records, alright? In the year and a half I was there, I found a hundred and seventy-six people jobs, right? These aren't, you know, they made a mistake, don't, you know, don't, let's not discount it, they made a mistake, but they deserved a shot, alright? And as I told them, I'm gonna help you with that shot, it ain't gonna be the best job, you may be washing dishes or mopping floors. But I'm gonna get you back in the business, and then you gotta prove yourself, and for a lot of them it was tough, okay? But the homeless thing was, the homes were the tough one, the homes were tough. And uh at that time, they would stay in churches during the winter, but there's no summer shelter, alright? The city's building a shelter now over by Oasis in the parking lot there, uh you know, they're gonna build one. But that's just, that's just gonna be a temporary fix, okay? We have definitely gotta figure out the homeless problem now. This is, this is uh, again, one of these double edged sword things, Portsmouth is very generous to homeless people. I got, it's the most generous city, whether it be Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Suffolk. If you're, if you're on the streets talking with the homeless, on Friday nights, uh Ken, for the last two years. I've been with a group of men, Catholic men, and we meet at the Children's Museum, six o'clock on Friday nights. And we walk the street for about two hours, feeding the homeless, you know, making sure they got a blanket or a pair of socks. And these are the same, these are the same guys I was working with eight years ago, okay? And, and I'm not gonna say they're comfortable being homeless, but they're, 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 they're safe and they know what they're doing, alright? But we still have to help them, okay? And, and it's gonna take, but again, I gotta go back to this generosity of Portsmouth. Portsmouth churches, Portsmouth people are very generous to the homeless, okay? And if we're gonna do that, my recommend, my recommendation is where the old Pines property was on Portsmouth Boulevard. Put housing there. Make a, make your housing there, if we're gonna take care of the homeless, then we need to take care of it, because if you can take care of the homeless. Everything else, I, I'd be honest with you, everything else will take care of themselves, okay? But it's, it's not gonna be a quick fix, because mental illness is an issue, a big issue right now, okay? Uh feeding them is a big issue, medical, dental, all of it, all of it has to be done, alright? Because, because we don't have, what do you wanna call it? A consortium to take care, everybody's doing their own thing, they've all gotta come together.
Of course, um as you would say, some of these things that you wanna do, I mean, how are you going to? Raise the money, if you will.
What did I say my number one thing was for council?
Creating revenue.
Yes, sir. Let me help find the money, and let the experts with homeless, the experts in crime, the experts in education. Let me just get them to reason, I want to create an environment where people could be successful, and money's not the thing that's gonna stop them, right?
Okay, what is gonna stop it?
Uh leadership. Leadership, visionary leadership, when you've had six city managers, four police chiefs, seven, uh seven chief financial officers. What, six public utility people? It's leadership, how can you change that many people and think you're gonna get anything done? Alright, we gotta, we gotta hire the right people the first time, and stop getting rid of them, I mean. What did we say, we're paying one point two million in severance because we, the council or somebody made bad decisions hiring people? That's, you know, council hired them, why do we have to pay for it? If you find, alright, you, I wish, I wish every time I made a bad mistake, somebody else paid for it. But I gotta say, one, I don't know about you, one point two million dollars would buy a lot of balloons for my parties I wanna go to. We're paying it to people who got fired two and three years ago.
Wow, um um because of arthritis and my knees, I, I, I um use a walker. And I've noticed that there are a lot of places in Portsmouth that. They're not that accessible to the handicap.
I agree.
Uh and, and the reason that I noticed this stuff because I just really moved to Portsmouth in February, I'm, I spent most of my life in Norfolk. Right, and um I noticed that, and I would just, you know, I mean, you go places and it just isn't there. Uh 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 there's some cities that they require. That you have it. And they, you know, then force it, uh what are your views on that?
I, I'm with you one hundred percent, Ken, but I'm gonna go back to the basic problem, you don't have the leadership to do it. On- once somebody gets something started, they get fired six months later, and you're starting it all over again. And you're the common person, you're the one who's there the whole time. Those folks, they're treating them like Christmas help, you know? They let them work for about three or four months and they get rid of them, that is not the way to run a one billion dollar company. You know, they went through all this planning for the casino, Ken, all this planning for, after the casino got built, what are we doing now? What are we doing, alright? Why aren't we developing the waterfront, alright, what's happening with the jail, alright? Twelve, thirteen years ago, uh Mayor Holly put together a group of citizens. And he called it the Citizens Municipal Twenty Twenty Five Commission. We met every, we met, we met the first Monday for two years, we met, to develop a plan for the city of Portsmouth. This was back in two thousand and ten, right? We wanted education to be thirty-three percent of the budget. We talked about roads, and just like you talked about, we talked about crime. This was fifteen years ago, or fourteen years ago, we did this, okay? They haven't done a plan since, right? How can you, how can you look at the future if you haven't planned for it, okay? And I'm gonna go back, we have smart people in the city of Portsmouth, ninety-six thousand people who care about the city of Portsmouth. Two years we met, Ken, two years we met, alright? Well, where's the next plan, okay? When, when that decision was made to move the jail off the waterfront, there should have been two plans already what to do with it. We're still admiring the problem, alright, and I'm not in the problem admiration business, I don't have time for it. And you don't deserve it as a citizen, because it's, you know, how long's that courthouse been empty, two years? The building across from City Hall, the one that's on the waterfront where the police used to be, that's been empty almost six, six years. What kind of business is that, if you owned a rental home and you had it empty for six years, somebody would shoot you, sort of saying, well, look at all the money you're wasting, okay? We're wasting, they're wasting our assets, this is our building, they're not taking care of us, and it's a shame.
So uh how can someone get in contact with you? If they wanna support you, if they wanna uh donate, uh all of that stuff, how can they?
I have a, I have a Facebook uh page, Ken, they can just get ahold of me at Bruce Lalande, just Facebook or Bruce Lalande twenty twenty-four. Email address, Bruce Lalande, same thing at C S dot com, alright, C S stands for CompuSir. And then I'm more than happy to give my phone number, because again, I'm all, all about these volunteer groups, seven five seven, two four one. Three zero two six, or just look at me, I'm, I mean, I'm about as visible as it can be, just walk up and say, hey, I saw you, Bruce. I need your help, or how can I help you, either way, doesn't matter, okay?
Oh, before we go, before you go, uh what church do you belong to, you never named the church?
I go, I go to Saint Paul's Catholic downtown on Washington Street.
Okay, okay.
And, and uh since uh, since January, I've been going to two and three churches every Sunday.
Right, oh, I know, yeah.
This week I went to, uh today I went to uh Fourth Baptist, Pastor Beeman's Church, that's the second time I've gone to Pastor Beeman's Church. I, you know, I, I uh, I don't go to campaign, I go to worship. But I want, those are the type of people, in my opinion, the values that we need back in the city of Portsmouth. Good Christian people, good Christian people is what's gonna bring this city back.
Amen, amen.
I just wanna say, I, I, I appreciate what Chief Jenkins has been doing, being, trying to be proactive as possible, I think he's a, I think he's a good man. The new city manager, I'm Navy, I'm, it's a shame he's Air Force, he could do a lot better if he was Navy, but uh. I think he deserves a, I think he deserves a shot at what he's doing, okay? And uh again, I, I just, I'm, I, I know I'm, I'm talking to you, and we've got a, a good Christian uh network here. Christian people have got to take this city back, alright? They've got, parents have got to start taking the values back to the city and saying, hey, you know, I've been here, I've been here all my life, alright? I remember those days when you could just leave your door unlocked and, you know, your neighbors would, would tell on you to your parents if you were doing something wrong. Right, there's nothing wrong with that, right? We just, we just need to take our city back, this, we're, we're, you know, three hundred year old city, we, we deserve more, and, and, and as I'm saying, when it comes to money. People deserve more, more respect with the money this beings, that we give as taxpayers, I mean, look at this, this real estate tax rate, Ken, it's, it's. It's crazy, it's crazy, okay?
How is that going, I mean, you've been uh monitoring it, and a lot of people don't know. How, I mean, are we getting what we, are we getting what we paid for?
More than we thought. We thought we'd get, we thought, as a city, you know, the state takes some, the casino takes some, and then we get some. We originally thought we would get about six to eight million dollars, we got seventeen million last year.
And where does that money go?
There we go, Ken, you just asked the question, where did the money go?
Okay.
That, and that's, and that, there's the issue right there, where'd the money go? Now, this is gonna be there, this is gonna be there, I think for another three years. Because Norfolk's gonna have their casino up by twenty twenty-five, and Petersburg's looking to put one about twenty twenty-six. That seventeen million's gonna shrink to about four or five million, so if we don't get smart right now, what we're doing with that money, it, it'll be for naught, you know? It'll be for naught.
Ninety-six, wow, it's uh, I, I, because I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. I often ask um uh uh residents, because coming from another city, I go. How come you don't have an airport, how come you don't have a this, how come you don't have a that, you know what I'm saying, I mean. You know, I mean, to me, Norfolk isn't that much bigger than, you know, I'm, why, you know, and, and, and why not?
And what, that, that's a great, that's a great, that's the comment right there, why not? Why not, right, why, why, you know?
I'm on the outside looking in, okay? The only time I, I would come over here, that's the thing, the, a reason to come over, because most of the time, the only time I came over here. I'm a minister of music. Because most of the time, the only time I came over here, I'm a minister of music, so I would play for a church or something.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, that's, I'm going back to what I said. Churches, we need to take the city back. And then on the council, Ken, you need business leadership, business leadership, all right? They're all good people on that council. They're all good people, but none of them have a business background. None of them have a money background. I'm boring. I love looking at those income statements and balance sheets, but that's the kind of person you need. I'm, I'm that geek that no girl would date, all right?
I mean, the, the, the people that run the world, Elon Musk and all of these people, uh, 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 you know, the owner of, um, X, the owner of Facebook, they're all geek. You know, Apple, all of that.
And that's what I wanna do. I, I, this, this, again, this is, I'm part, if you were in Eskimo in Alaska, Ken, you'd be getting the check every quarter because of the pipeline, okay? We have a casino that gave us seventeen million dollars. Where's my money? All right? And that's our money. We voted for that casino. We citizens voted for that casino. I, I'm not seeing better, I'm not, my track service isn't getting any better and it's not getting any cheaper. My water bill, I can't even tell my water bill from one month to the next. And my real estate tax bill's crazy, all right? That's ridiculous. When you get seventeen million dollars from a casino, Ken, something's, something's not right.
Something wrong, something wrong. Okay, I like it. Uh, I wanna thank you for coming in. Uh, we gonna try to get you back on the, be right before, uh, uh, vote time. And, and when is, when, when did we go to vote?
Well, Ken, voting actually starts on the twentieth of September. And then the general election's on the fifth of September, but between now and then, there's gonna be a lot of noise with the presidential election. There's a senator election, there's a House of Representatives election, a mayor's election, big mayor's election. Uh, definite, uh, uh, definite, uh, 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 impact on where the city goes, but, uh, but I'm telling you, Ken, I, I wanna, I wanna help. I wanna earn the trust. I wanna earn the respect of people in Portsmouth. I gave you my resume. I've worked hard, Ken.
It's amazing resume. It's an amazing resume.
I have a full toolbox. I have a full toolbox to do the work that we need to do for this city and I wanna work hard for this city, okay?
It's, it's society. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this. It's, it's society because we always want the flashy car. But we don't want maybe the tractor. Because the tractor is what you use to build, to dig a foundation.
You ain't right. That's all.
Never said it, never, never, never claimed it.
But, uh, have people go on my Facebook page, please. Uh, I don't care. Challenge me with anything because, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's our right, it's our right. If, if you wanna be part, if you want good government, you have to participate with government and I want.
Right. Of course, and of course, uh, none of this applies to any cowboy fan. If you're a cowboy fan, we, we really don't care, do we?
Just let you know, Friday afternoon, I got the endorsement, I got the endorsement of the teachers union. So I have the teachers behind me. So I think that means a lot because, uh, you know, all the, you know, the, the, I taught at Tidewater for eight years. I have the master's degrees. I do the mentoring with the boys. I'm in charge of Safety Town. I was on the Career Technical Advisory Board for a long time, Police Athletically. Ken, it's all about educate. Education is what's gonna get us out of this town, all right? And we need to provide even more resources to the schools, even more resources. That's number one, number one.
Well, we, he would try to be fair. We give everybody a voice when we talking to the other candidates, but, uh, uh, like I said, Dave, you know, you asked me, what are you gonna, what am I gonna ask? Uh, this is not a debate thing here. It is, uh, you know, I could do it, but no, this is not that. What I'm trying to do is present or introduce and let people, let you make your case and let the people decide. That's America.
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah. I remember the days of Walter Cronkite, see?
And that's the facts.
That's the way it is. But anyway, I'm gonna give you the last word to tell us in a nutshell, uh, what you wanna do.
Sir, I wanna provide business leadership for this city, Ken. Business leadership, all right? I wanna, I wanna protect the taxpayer dollars. I want, I want taxes lowered significantly. Uh, I want better red, I want better homes in this town. I want better neighborhoods in the town. But more than anything else, I want us to take our community back and allow me the opportunity to earn that. Again, I'm a visible person. I want people to, you know, be as, uh, be as aggressive and be as vocal as they can. Because, Ken, this is our city. I've been here since, I've been here since I was four years old. My mom and dad are buried here. This is my home and this is where I'm gonna, this is where I have my stake.
All right. Uh, thank you for, for coming on. And, uh, I'm gonna have you on again to, to discuss things. And, uh, hint, uh, you know, we do, uh, commercials, uh, re- real cheap. I have no shame. I have no shame at all. I have no shame.
I have a, a couple of these nonprofits I'm in charge of. I need you with me to help raise money there, Ken.
Hey, give me a call.